The meeting is called to order at 7:02 PM. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion and a second that the agenda of February 27, 2018 be approved or submitted? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. May I have a motion and a second that the board approve the following consent agenda to include minutes of the February 6, 2018 meeting, recommendations from the Committee on Special Education and Preschool Education, and the request is written in the agenda. So moved. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. I have a motion and a second that the treasurer's report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, the general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund cash report, and school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending December 31, 2017 be approved. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. All right, we have special reports.
Great. We have a large group of our wonderful art teachers here, so do you guys know how you're coming up to sit? Have you figured that out yet?
No.
All right, so we'll take a minute if you guys want to come up. I'd love for you to introduce yourselves, just so the board, if I just read the names, they won't know which one is where, so I'll let you guys introduce yourself. And we have Nicole Whitehead, our Director of STEAM here as well.
You can start. Okay. Okay, Nicole Whitehead, Director of STEAM. And Anne Ponzi, I'm art facilitator and art teacher at the high school.
I'm Susan Vatican, the art teacher at Cobles.
Brian Garza, art teacher, Baytown Middle School.
Yeah, and we have some additional, yeah, yeah. Maureen, go ahead.
I'm Maureen Peer, art teacher at Indian Landing.
And Mike Robinson, art teacher at Harris Hill.
You're welcome, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay. So, thank you very much for having us here tonight. There's a list of the names. And so tonight, we're going to be highlighting some components of the art program, K-12, here at Penfield, that we're really excited to be sharing with you tonight. More specifically, we will be talking about some curriculum highlights, instructional practices, notable achievements, and initiatives. And we really just tried to focus in on some main ones. There's certainly lots of notable achievements and initiatives going on, but for our purposes tonight, just focusing in on a select few. So, we're actually going to start with our elementary curriculum. So I'm going to turn it over to Sue Vatican right now, who is the art facilitator as well for all of our K-5.
So, the curriculum at the elementary school is based on the tools that students need to create their art, so it's based on the elements and principles of design, which is line and shape and color. So we're basically teaching the kids the building blocks that they need in order to create artwork and learn about composition. We also are based on the pre-current New York State standards, which was the kids have the ability to create art. We use a bunch of different materials, so that they're doing clay, sometimes paper mache, they're using oil pastels and paint, so they get exposure to a lot of different art media. And then they also look at artwork and practice visual literacy, so they're thinking about what an artwork might mean, why an artist might have chosen certain colors and shapes to use in their artwork, how the artist tried to fill their space, and then also understanding their own artwork. And then we're talking about refining artistic ideas, so we teach them how artists work. So they do a lot of brainstorming of ideas, they sketch inside their sketchbooks or do sketches before they do a work of art, they work, they practice, and then they complete a final artwork. And then we're also concerned, and our report cards reflect the fact that we're talking about citizenship in the art room. So they're not just working in a studio by themselves, but they're working in a studio with others, so how they share materials, how they treat materials, and how they clean up after themselves are all an important part of our program. Those are some pictures of artwork that the students have done, and some pictures of the students working. You can see a couple clay pieces, there's an oil pastel and a chalk pastel. And then there's some other pictures. We have, we teach kindergarten through 5th grade, and the students come to us once every six-day cycle. The kindergartners come for 35 minutes, and the older kids come for 45 minutes. The kids really, I was just talking to a group of students today, and they were asking me why they only have art once every six days. They really are excited about coming to art. I think it's such a different experience for them in terms of creativity and brainstorming and thinking about how to solve problems and what to do when something doesn't go as planned, and so it's very different from the rest of their, you know, a lot of the rest of what they do at the school, so I think they're very excited to come to the art room and a lot of hands-on learning.
Okay, and now we'll transition over to some middle school curriculum highlights. Brian?
Okay, so, we have three grade levels at the middle school. 6th grade, it runs for 40 weeks, so we get to see the kids all year long. We focus on cross-curricular and cultural art history. Students work in a ton of different mediums in 6th grade. We're two-dimensional, three-dimensional, clay, watercolor, paint, and they start to look at art critically. Not only are they still getting the motor skills that they need, they're looking at art critically, they're creating, and they're thinking as artists. 7th grade is our shortest run with middle schoolers. It's only 10 weeks. Kids complain about this all the time. How come art is only 10 weeks? Here, we focus on, not, we focus on elements and principles of art throughout all the grade levels, but here we really focus on it, and we focus on it within two-dimensional art. And before we know it, they are gone. In 8th grade, the course runs for 20 weeks, so we get them half the year. We're focusing on art history, culture, and we're using technology in art. At this grade, at this grade level, students start to see how art affects their lives. They touch it and they see it every day, from fashion, from what they're wearing, to the technology in their hands. And so, this is when they start to realize, hey, I'm dealing with art every day. And so it's kind of an eye-opening experience in 8th grade as they leave for the high school. Thank you.
And here's some samples of some middle school work.
All right, so here you have, it's mixed, it's mixed grade levels, but on the left you have Kanapa jars as part of a cross-curricular lesson that we do with Egyptian art. You can see the sarcophagus on the bottom. We've got in 8th grade, a Zen tangle, which is really, really cool, and a Pacific Northwest Coast mask on the upper right. Again, students working, these are some pictures from just a couple weeks ago of students working, and a large African mask on the right-hand side.
Thank you, Brian. And now we're going to transition to the high school with Anne.
High school is, it's a very different beast when they come to the high school for art. A lot of times they go into shock a little bit, because it is so different than the K through 8 experience. It is much more curriculum-based, it is much more like authentic studio practice. We're really preparing kids for life in many ways, not only for life and art careers, but also ways to express themselves, ways of integrating information from all other areas. And really, in the art department, they have to think almost, you know, in a more unprescribed way than in other areas. They have to reflect and analyze and think continually about what they're doing, and sometimes that's a little overwhelming. You know, we provide a safety net and a framework to help students. All of the foundation that they've had for K through 8 really lead up to the vocabulary and the concepts that they're going to build on at the high school, and now they're really learning about how to function as an artist in society. So we have Studio Art, Studio and Media Arts, and Foundation and 3D Design, that are the three full-year foundation classes that New York State has approved for that one credit of art that students need for art or music. Now, they cover a lot of the same design and vocabulary concepts, but they each interpret them in a different media. With 3D Design, you're really building and constructing in the round, so you're working with bookmaking, with plaster, with metal, with ceramics, both functional and sculptural, so you're really constructing three-dimensionally throughout the whole year. But the vocabulary only changes between the foundation classes based on materials. In Media Arts, you're working with digital processes to interpret everything. So you're in the computer lab, you're working with the Adobe suite, you're incorporating photography, animation, and web design, working digitally with similar vocabulary and concepts, but then with the different technical piece that fits the electronic world, the technology they're working with in there. And then Studio and Art is what most districts have, and it's one of the more traditional media. You're working with drawing, painting, perspective, printmaking, you are doing a little bit of 3D in Studio Art as well, but it's a more well-rounded approach. We do do a little bit of digital in there as well. And then at the high school, we have 14 classes total, I believe it is, and the electives are all half-year courses. And those give students an area to really shine. They find, sometimes they'll find one area that they really focus on, whether it's 2D, 3D, or digital. Other times, they'll take a survey and really get a good spattering and well-rounded education in all those areas. You know, we have students that have come back to us and said that their experience at Penfield High School really prepared them for college, that that first year of college wasn't as stressful for them as it was for other students, because they had such a great foundation in the program that we offer here. Students find a way to build a life through, I think, our whole Penfield Arts School, you know, art program from K through 12. They find an area to excel, they find a place to feel safe, to shine. You know, some of the things that students have told us, or parents have told us, you know, aren't the things that you could see neatly in, you know, statistics or rankings, but, you know, things like, you know, "I didn't know why we were funding the art department so much," and then I had my son, and if it wasn't for the art department, he wouldn't have made it through high school. And then I saw the value in those kind of programs. Or, you know, one student, you know, said, you know, "Art department saved my life." You know, things, things like that that are priceless, when I have parents coming back to me and telling me about how prepared they were for even their college admission process, you know, and it, parents are really, I'm a parent of senior right now, so I know how stressful that can be, and to have the support that we provide throughout the art department for kids, it's really wonderful. So, I gave you brochures that really goes through the nitty-gritty of our art department. Some of the highlights, the AP Art History course is new, that started last year, and that, students did really well. We had a great first year, and we're, it's not running this year, but we're looking forward to it running next year. It's the kind of thing where, due to numbers, it'll probably run about every other year. It's, the students did very well on the AP Art History exam, which is really the barometer for how well the course started, which was, which was a little scary when those scores came in, but they were great. A lot of fours, which was really nice. Ceramics, we have our own Raku kiln now, so we do our own Raku process, which not only provides opportunities for students to work with Raku in the fall and in the, and in the spring. That's one of the Raku images, right up on the upper-right corner, but it also saves the district money, because a one-time investment covered what we were paying annually for the outside studio to come in and do it. So, you know, just like any artist, we have to look at fiscal responsibility so that we can provide kids the best program, but also so we can maintain what the costs are to deliver that program. So here, here's a good example of some of the variety between the clay. One of the books next to the Raku piece on the right is something that was made in Foundation and 3D Design, digital photography, and metals in the lower right-hand corner. And then drawing, you know, drawing is the foundation of any program, whether it's done through portfolio or an individual drawing class, or the way it gets applied, some of the understanding of color, the way it gets applied in other areas. In this case, those are some enamel pieces in the middle. And I think that covers, covers just about everything there. And I, you've got all of these lovely reading materials there to help keep you occupied for a while.
In terms of instructional practices, you know, having done this with some of the other STEAM areas, you know, some of them are very similar in that differentiation is used in the classroom, and we see that across all of our content areas. But I wanted to highlight that models are very important for the, for the students' understanding, and then that the reflection part that they talked about earlier, that there, I do think that there are so many times during the day that kids are, you know, going to the next class, to the next class, and it's really nice that art does give them that time to reflect and really focus again on that whole student. A lot of research has shown that artistic literacy can, can lead to higher mindfulness and, and actually raises academic achievement, so I think that's really important for us to always think about.
A little bit of a delay here, and I'm using my good hand. Okay, there we go. Okay, so I'm going to turn it back over to Sue, just to highlight some notable achievements in the elementary area.
Most of our achievements are in artwork that's exhibited outside of the school, so we have a SEPTA book fair at Barnes &amp; Noble, and we put student artwork in, which includes artwork from the 1211 students, and also from the regular ad students that they're integrated with. So there's usually, we usually put in about 25 pieces from each school. And then some of the schools, elementary schools participate in the National PTA Reflections Program, so the students are allowed to do a piece of artwork at home or take a photograph, and then some of our students, I know the students at Cobles, there were three that went from, to Genesee Valley PTA, and then they were chosen to move on to New York State. We've had a couple that then go and tour around the country. One video animation that one of the first or second grade boys did at home. And then we also are just gearing up for Arts and Education Festival, so each elementary school sometime between like the middle of March and the middle of May puts on the Arts Education Festival. So we mat and label about over 500 pieces of work, so every child in the school has at least one piece of work. Some of them come from the classroom too, so then they might have more than one example. If we're integrating with a classroom curriculum, we would put some of that integrated material in. And then I, we sometimes have community artists, I have a potter that comes in from Miranda Coy and does a presentation for the students. She throws on the wheel so they can see that. We have, you know, face painting and different things. It's like, really a community event. We have music playing, the students play their instruments, and it's, a lot of the families, it's very well-attended. So that's coming up in the next couple months.
And then I know that I personally always look forward to, when it's voting time, that there's always art on display, so appreciate looking at all that as well. And then moving on to our secondary achievements. This is, there we go. All right, so Anne, I'll turn that over to you.
We have a variety of exhibits, places where we can have students work outside of the building, which is always nice, whether it's at RET, there's a middle school and high school show that's every year out at RET, and they have awards, and four, both last year and this year, four of our students had won awards in that show, which is really nice. It's a, they, they receive, I think this year it was a gift card to Target, as well as being recognized by each department in RET, it gives a reward based on that particular media. Scholastic Art Awards, five jewelry students had won awards in 2017, and two in the current school year that we just found out about. And then we participate annually in a Shared Spaces show at Nazareth, which is one student and one teacher together exhibit, and that's coming up. Actually, we just got paperwork on that in the mail today. So that's nice. That's usually in May. Last year was kind of fun, because it coincided with one of the district's proms, so everybody came really dressed up to the opening before they went to prom. You'd think it was a black tie affair at Nazareth. And then Chris Pelletier always hosts the, in May, usually after the spring Raku firing, an exhibit that he puts on at Canal Town Coffee, and that, that will be happening again. So, well, I always try to send you out information on all of this, so I make sure you'll get it all.
So, in terms of initiatives, some of the, highlighted four major initiatives that have happened over the last couple years, since the last time this program review has been conducted, and Anne already spoke of one of them, but we were really excited to offer AP Art History here at the high school last school year, and looking forward to offering it again next year. The elementary team designed and then implemented a new report card, so that was some work that was conducted by those four teachers and out in the new report card format this year. We've all begun starting the unpacking of newly adopted state standards, so the Board of Regents adopted new art standards, and we were all fortunate to go to a conference together over at Monroe, too, to start unpacking them as a group, and music, art, and there was even dance and theater as well. And then last is a big one, is that using these new standards, really looking at our current standards as they are, and figuring out, you know, where do we need to have some realignment, where do we need to do some redesign, and where do we need to start from new, because it's brand-new. A lot of it, in talking to these folks, we're already doing a lot of it, so that's the good news, is that it's not a complete overhaul, probably more of an overhaul at elementary than any other level. Am I right in saying that, Sue? So, so that's probably where the focus will be, in the very beginning at least, is the elementary level, but certainly make shifts as needed at the middle school and high school.
And last but not least, open it up for any questions.
Board members, any questions? Comments? Lisa?
Hi. Thanks for coming. Is there an art pathway now for graduation, or is that not yet?
Well, there's, students have the option of doing, completing an art sequence in lieu of a language sequence, after they've completed their minimum language requirements, so that's still in place. The Pathways Initiative, which was something that came out a couple of years ago through New York State, they haven't really, I think, nailed down fully what they're going to do with that. I know they talked about it, and they have it open as an option, but the actual evaluation process as part of that has never really been fully rolled out.
Okay. But so, so how does it work then? So if they choose that, is that, is that help with their advanced designation then? If they choose a sequence instead of a language sequence for art, or it's just like another thing?
Substitution.
Yeah, I don't think so. You know, I think, you know, a lot of times when they work that out, it's based on, you know, where students are going to find success the most. And if language is not really an area that they're going to find success, looking at what's going to help them when they're graduating the most. Some colleges are going to want more language, and they can't really do an art sequence based on that requirement. Others, you know, once they've reached, depending on what they're going to be doing with their post-high school career, it's not a problem. And the counselors usually work that out based on their individual college goals. But the pathways piece, that's always the unknown piece from the state. We haven't gotten concrete information as to what that is, because that, that pathways piece was supposed to, as I understand it, to be in lieu of a global exam for students.
Or something, right. That's how I understood it, too. It was supposed to be, you could choose something.
Yeah, where they, you know, looking at other ways for students to succeed, and a lot of times it's that global exam that is the tough one for some, some students across the state. So that's, it was rolled out in order to help with that, but it hasn't really been fully.
Gotcha. Great, thank you.
Barb?
I have no questions, but I just have a comment that my Penfield graduate is now going to be 10 years post-graduating from Penfield, but in our house, there's elementary, framed elementary pictures, there's clay things that are prominent on shelves, as well as the high school, there's a lovely little jewel, jewelry piece, so, from every place, that, so if you want to come and have kids come to my house and see things.
Art history.
Art history, right?
That's why I sign off on field trip requests.
Oh, okay. Well, you could walk.
Any other questions or comments? Jen?
For the 7th graders, is there anything in addition to that 10-week course? Is that enough?
We do run clubs. We have a ceramics club, we have a mural club, and we have an art club, which sometimes we'll focus on something other than painting and clay. Lisa, I think a couple years ago, did mosaic work, like glass, glass stuff, so.
It's tricky, because that's the year that we get the health in, so it's kind of, you know, there's only so much time in the schedule, so it's nice that they're able to offer all their opportunities for students that are interested.
Okay. Thank you. And in addition to the notable items there, you guys do work, I know at Harris Hill, Mr. Robinson works very, very well and helps out the PTA a lot, so I'd like to say thank you, in addition to what you already do, for that type of work.
So, I wanted to say, too, I'm always fascinated and impressed with what you can bring out in our students, because we've seen, we've been to the art exhibits, and then a few of us went to the Family First Art Show, and then you have the display at the end of the year, board meeting, and sometimes I just absolutely cannot even fathom how some of the children at their ages had the talent, but then it's been recognized and brought out, and that is just the most wonderful thing. And so, we have to thank you for that, because it's one of those things where you recognized it, the parent, you're working with the parents, and the student is finding that success, and all of it is just so wonderful in terms of the whole student. So, we're all very appreciative of everything that you do to help the students achieve all that. It's quite impressive. And we thank you very much for the report tonight. We always know and appreciate the time and effort you put into it. We know it's, it takes a little time, and then you take time out to come and join us and share it with us, and we appreciate it, so we wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for making the time to really recognize and to just find out more about what we do. It's really appreciated.
It is our pleasure.
Thank you.
All right, well, this is visitor speaking time, but we don't have any visitors tonight. Is that correct? Okay, so we'll move on. And it is student representative time, and look who's here to do, to do Claire's job tonight.
Yeah, so our lovely Claire is at the Strings Estravaganza Concert that's happening right now in the auditorium, as well as, I want to be up and honest, that Jim, Jim Pfeiffer and Mark Sansucci's kids are also there, so I know Jim stepped out, and Mark may step out as well, and I know that Lisa's child's there, and Mark, and mine. We should move the meeting down there, but I think, you know, for those watching, it's, you know, I get paid to miss things, but it's, you know, thank you to the board. I know you guys are volunteers, and there are many things that you miss with your own families, because of all the meetings we have, and workshops, and advocacy travel, so it's just an opportunity to say thank you for all that you do for, for Penfield. And if you disappear, I know where you are, because you're running down to see your child, and that's, I think, is always first. We're here for kids. So this evening, no, I'm not on a super tense report, I'm Claire, I apologize. So Claire is playing music. I have Claire, this is how good Claire is, she actually wrote up her statements for me, and I said to Claire, I'm so excited, because for once, she can't steal my thunder, so I will steal hers. I will not do this justice. Claire does it much better than I will, but I will read what she has prepared for the board. So, at Harris Hill, 4th grade classes are taking turns attending a day of school in the one-room schoolhouse at Dayton's Corners to learn about early American education. The University of Rochester Yellow Jackets paid a visit to Harris Hill to entertain students with amazing a cappella. 1st graders are competing with reading minutes during their Olympic reading challenge. Over at Cobles, 5th graders are experimenting with laptops and learning keyboarding basics, and students in Makers Club are finally testing out their projects after hard work with simple robotics. At Indian Landing, students showed off their Lego creations and created new art pieces themselves at Indian Landing's Lego Museum. At Scribner, students came together to raise money and donate canned goods for the Cameron Community Ministries earlier this month. 4th graders displayed what they learned- Fourth graders displayed what they learned about colonial America at their annual Colonial Days performance, where students dressed in colonial gear to sing and dance for students and families. First graders sent Valentine Day cards to their pen pals in Tallahassee, Florida. And Scribner kicked off their annual penny drive to support Green Tree Elementary School in Houston, Texas, a school and community that was devastated by Hurricane Harvey. At Bay Trail, drama students are preparing for the annual musical Xanadu Junior. Eighth graders learned about the Holocaust through a poster exhibit in the auditorium. And at Penfield High School, the annual second, or the Second Annual Career Day was held, where students went around the school to explore different career options from experts in each field. Our own Frankie Gissen Danner became a four-time state champion in wrestling. And the girls indoor track and field athletes finished second at their big meet over break while the boys team finished fifth. And select Penfield students qualified for the state's meet as well, which is in Staten Island this weekend. The boys hockey team played victor at the sectional finals last night. I know Mr. Otney from the board was there and they did lose by one goal. Tough game, but they did a terrific job this season, really making Penfield proud. So kudos to the hockey team and to our varsity coach, Nate Miller, who's also a counselor here at the high school.
Thank you, Claire. I mean, Dr.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
And Claire, if you join in on the meeting, if you're watching, not at the moment, but we appreciate it, all of the effort that she puts into it. These are nice reports.
They're amazing reports.
Yes. They're very well done and we enjoy listening to everything that everyone's up to.
All right.
All right, superintendent's report.
All right. So this evening, I have our student and staff honors. I just have a brief school safety update. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Sansucci, who will walk us through the 2018-19 Program Two Budget Review and also the 2018 Elementary Additions Project Update. And I'll start with student and staff honors. So math counts. Congratulations to our Bay Trail Math Counts team on finishing in third place in the chapter competition. The team now moves on to the state competition. So great kids, loving math and competing and doing really well. We just had art, there are art teachers here, the art exhibit awards. Congratulations to four PHS students whose work was on, or all the students whose work was on display at the RIT Gallery in the 2018 Middle School and High School Invitational Art Exhibition. Four of our students earned awards at the exhibition, James Edwards, Abigail Herman, Nicholas Mattson in Emerson Parks, and Mrs. Punsey just mentioned this a moment ago. Scholastic Art and Writing Awards, so congratulations to student Katie Yates on winning a Silver Key Award in the 2018 Scholastic Art and Writing Awards for her written work Salvation 2987. An honorable mention awards in jewelry went to Margaret Bassney and Hannah Polinsky. So again, we just heard from art and now you see really all of the great kudos our kids get out in the community for their incredible talent. And that talent comes naturally and also from some incredible teachers and a lot of hard work from students. The Penfield High School National Honor Society sponsored their annual blood drive on February 7th and a total of 85 units were collected, which will help up to 255 patients. I will just say as an aside, the American Red Cross that comes and run this have always said when they come in, and this year was no different, that our students are the most organized, they're the most helpful, and they really love coming to Penfield for the blood drive just because of the respect and support they get from all the students and staff members. So that's, that's nice to hear. It's a great, a great cause, but it's nice to hear that our students are working hard. Vocal competition, congratulations to our own senior Adriana Scalise on placing second in the Rotary District Vocal Competition, which featured finalists from throughout Monroe and Ontario counties. And so if you've ever seen any of our musical, we'll be sad to see her go off after high school, but she has an incredible voice, incredible talent and a lot of hard work as well. Wrestling honors, congratulations to PHS wrestling coach, John Leon, who was awarded the Terry Robert Justice Award for outstanding service to high school wrestling at the Section Five Championships. Congratulations also go out to our students Frankie Gissen Danner for his record-setting sixth championship title and Cooper Kropman for his second championship win. So again, just some really strong athletes working hard. All-county festivals, the following students have been selected to participate in the Monroe County All-County Festivals in March. I won't read all of their names, but they come from elementary, junior high and the senior high school. And you will, all the names are listed in the agenda if anybody would like to go. But again, just kudos to our students and their music teachers and the hard work they put in. I always remember Mrs. Kennedy, the music teacher at Cobble's, who I made the mistake once, I have two boys that play, and I said, you know, they, they really have some talent. And she said to me, "Don't ever say they have talent again because that's hard work. That's not just, you know." And I thought that was a really great idea when you have someone who can play a music or sing really well or is an artist. You know, it's easy for us to say, well, that's talent, but for any skill like that, it takes hard work and dedication. So I thought that was really, a really good point. And these kids work hard to get, to get this honor. That is my update. Any questions? Oh, I still have school safety, I'm going to go to that, but.
Excuse me. Sorry, I was off my game there. Board members, any questions or comments? All right.
All right, good. So I, we added this to the agenda last week. It wasn't a planned piece of the agenda, you know, that we typically plan our agendas in the beginning of the year and then we really look and try to look at that. But obviously, I just want to take a moment on behalf of the district and for the board to just say, we, we all know in this community that our world was rocked unfortunately, I have to say, once again on February 14th with the tragic events that took place in Florida. And, you know, this is something that, that I thought about the other day when I said that, I realize, it came to realization, so just going to go on a little soapbox for a minute to mention that every one of our students in kindergarten through 12th grade all started their public schooling after Columbine, which is something I think we sometimes take for granted as, as adults, where we remember how the world changed then, yet all of our, our students are all post-Columbine kids. And, and you know, that's a terrifying piece. I know many of us are parents of younger children, of, of older children. You know, it's something that you obviously want to, want to hide and shelter our kids from for as long as we can. But students are living in a world that's much different than the world I grew up in and that we all grew up in. So I just want to take a moment to review, just basically a sort of reminder of our school safety and let the community know and the board know that we review, and typically who comes here for this annual review is our Director of Facilities, Alan McNiff. And he does an incredible job bringing consistency both on the health and safety team and also with working with principals and our hall monitors and his B&amp;G crew and directly with Mark Sansucci to really make sure that we have a consistency around our safety plans and our building safety plans. So we review those annually, but then we review those when any, any time. They're, they're sort of living documents. And so last week, while, while most teachers and students were off of school, many of our administrators were in the building and there were a number of meetings with Alan McNiff, Dr. Sansucci, Howard Hennig here at the high school and a number of other administrators, as well as meetings with the Monroe County Sheriff's Office. Because when anything happens as tragic in Florida, it is a great time to take a step back and say, let's look at our safety plans again. Did we learn anything? Can we change anything? And so, you know, obviously our heart goes out to everybody in, in Florida and also our kids and who attend our schools and our parents who have to trust us when they put those, their babies on the bus to come to school, whether it's a kindergarten or a 12th grader. And just a reminder that our district emergency response plans are reviewed throughout the school year. Schools and the district conduct drills throughout the year, both with staff and students in both. Modifications and updates are made to the plans as appropriate. And then the plans are submitted and approved annually at the New York State Education level. So they also review and, and have to approve our plans. We partner and we've talked about this, especially when Alan's here, but just, I think it's a good time as a reminder, is we have, our, our second board goal is around partnerships. And it's one that we typically look at when we think about academics and we think about partnering with our parent organizations and outside organizations. Well, three of the groups that we partner closely with are the Monroe County Sheriff's Department, the Brighton Police and the Office of Homeland Security. What I don't have up there, but I will share with you, is we also partner in, on times with the Wayne County Sheriff's Office because we do have a number of students who live in Wayne County but are in the Penfield Central School District. And, and all of these organizations communicate really well with each other and so their partnership has been incredible. So the plans before we submit them to New York State, through the process and then throughout last week were reviewed with these important partners and, you know, just, it's a given, but it's a nice piece to remind everybody about is that we really do believe that the safety and security of our students, staff and families are, are a top priority for, for the district as a whole. So I just, with that, I want to say too, and I don't have it in this slide because I wasn't sure when the email was going out, but right before this meeting, parents at the high school received an email that there are some changes going to place at the high school. And so there'll be more locked doors in the morning. There's currently, in the past, there are five main entrances to get into the school that were open. And there'd be a hall monitor by those doors. So in the morning when kids are coming to school, some of it was purely for convenience, the, what I refer to as the Peachtree entrance. So for students who walk from the Peachtree neighborhood, they were able to enter the building in the back of the building and we would have a hall monitor out there. In working with the Monroe County sheriffs and looking at what happened around the world on the 14th is, we are now, starting on Monday, the 5th, only two entrances are going to be open in the morning. And that will be the main entrance to the school and the, what I refer to as the north entrance, exit, entrance 14, which is by the auditorium. And those are always staffed with hall monitors as people are coming in. Staff will still be able to get into the building, but they need to use their ID. And we're going to be encouraging and asking staff, and this is difficult, but if you ever dropped a kid off at preschool, you probably had to do it, is we don't hold the door open for people coming in behind you. So if you're a staff member, you have an ID, you can get in, but it will be a conversation with students that they've got to go around to the other entrance. The Peachtree entrance, it's not that far of a walk to walk around to the, walk around the back of the building on sidewalks to get to the north entrance. So they're small changes, but, but they're ones that we believe are important for the safety and security. And as example, there are some other things we're doing, I'm not going to go through that whole piece, but there are examples of what we're doing to modify our plans to try to, in the best we can, make sure that students, staff and anybody in the building is safe. The other piece is that the reason we're doing it on Monday is so that we don't have kids show up to school to a locked door, but that we're, we're informing students, staff has been informed and families received an email. And there's a number, another number of emails we receive from staff. Whenever we get anything from staff, we're going to review it. And I just wanted to give kudos because that suggestion about the doors, while supported by the Monroe County Sheriff, came from one of our own hall monitors in the high school, Scott Beeswing, who, who walked the halls, he walks halls every day and shared some thoughts that he had. So I want to give kudos to him too because change can come not just from an administrator or from somebody on the health and safety team, but anybody in the building who has a suggestion and some great suggestions have been shared and we really do look at all of those. So I just wanted to mention that. And the last slide is questions.
Okay. Board members, any questions or comments? John?
No, I appreciate that because obviously safety is paramount, otherwise nothing else is, is worth it. But are there, and I don't want to discredit the, the partnerships that are in place with the sheriff. And it's sad that, you know, we've come to this, but are there school safety specialists, like experts throughout the country that you can contract with and have them come in and do an audit, having another set of, of eyes?
Yes, there are. And actually, I'll look to Mark because I don't want to, and I don't want to put you on the spot for the date, but we did have a school safety audit.
We, we did. We were actually, as one of the meetings Dr. Putnam referenced, we, we, we've done school safety audits at least twice in my memory. And the last one led up to the security project that we just went through. So we did an audit. Out of that came lots of changes to practice. Out of that particular audit came, you know, the, the show your ID to get into the building. There were lots of big and small changes and, and a $4 million capital project that came out of that that we're just now finishing. The conversation that we, that we just started was, we're still finishing that project up. There's still a little bit of work left to be done, probably another year's worth before we button that up. At that point, I think we start over and it would be time to do another secure, let's start over, do another audit, see where we're at, see, because it's not just the stuff, it's the people, it's the implementation, it's the practice. And, you know, we can, we always look at that. You heard Dr. Putnam mention how we look at that. But it's always nice to have that outside set of eyes. So we've, I think we have a plan for when, when we would do that.
Great, thank you.
That's a great question.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you for addressing that tonight.
You're welcome. It's, you know, it's one of those pieces I wish I didn't, but as, as John Otney said, it's, you know, it's sort of, you got to start with safety and security first. And I did mention too, I'll say, is that, you know, there are some other things, I'm not going to go through all the, the changes we're making, but there are some things we're looking, looking at that I'll keep the board and the community updated as we make those shifts.
Okay.
The, oh, this, I forgot this. This is our school calendar. So later in the agenda, you'll be asked to vote on approving the 2018-19 school calendar. So it's for next year. We are starting again with three days in the beginning of the school year for teachers. That has worked out well. First day for students would be the Wednesday after Labor Day. The one change I'll point out that, that we've looked at, because these calendars typically are about the same, which is where the breaks fall, but we're looking at our October Superintendent's Conference Day is typically on a Friday and then Monday is Columbus Day. And what we're looking at doing this year is having Friday be a day of school, Monday is Columbus Day and Tuesday would be the Superintendent's Conference Day. Some of you, we're working now to finalize details, but our hope is that we are going to have Dr. Ken Ginsburg there. And if anybody remembers, there was a lot of stuff that came out with Dr. Ken Ginsburg, the real focus on trauma-informed instruction, the leading with the whole student. And he's an incredible resource. We've sent teams from all six buildings to see him present. And then a number of them at all the buildings are working to continue that work in the building. So if you ever got a chance to see him, he really is, really an inspirational guy and has a nice touch with staff and administrators on really what it means to educate for the whole child and understand sort of where, what our students are coming from and how we can support them emotionally. So we're excited about that, but we had to tweak that in order to, to fit his calendar. He's a pretty busy guy. And then you'll notice that, I just want to point out, is that the last day for teachers, and this is not under our control, it's under New York State Ed, is June 26th. So it's a, it feels like a later year and that just, it falls that way. If you look at it, it's about every seven years, you know when the school year's going to start and when it's going to end. And then our spring recess is in there, April 15th to 19th. I will just note is that this is the BOCs. So BOCs 1 and BOCs 2 sort of create a calendar. They have a committee that involves union representation from administrators and teachers, private and parochial schools, public schools, a number of people are on that committee. But this one, sometimes Good Fridays included in the April break, this time it is not. And so that actually, from a school point of view, it helps because it provides us another day of instruction, but it is a change. And I would just share that I'm sure the brunt of these questions now go to Sharon Urckfitts and Nancy Bradstreet, who have been getting phone calls since about the middle of January on when can I book my spring break? So they, so I appreciate all the calls they took and were very kind to say, we've got a board to prove it. And then, so after tomorrow, lots of return phone calls on, on when, when these dates are. Probably more than you wanted to know about the calendar.
Yes. Barb?
I have a question on, on the calendar. So the high school graduation is June 20th?
That's a great question. And I believe the high school graduation is, oh, it's on the calendar, June 20th. Is that right? Yes.
That's why I saw it, yeah. That is a...
That's a great question, and I believe the high school graduation is, oh, it's on the calendar, June 20th. Is that right?
Right.
Yes.
That's why I saw it, yeah. That is a Thursday again, or?
I believe so.
So, before, I'm just, so the whole week before they're taking some of their regents?
Yes. Yep. So, the issue with graduation is that, and every high school deals with this, is that it is booked years in advance to save your date. It's kind of like a wedding. So, unfortunately, the way the calendar falls, this is our, this is our save the date, I guess, for it. And so, we'll have to work through that. There are, I will tell you, there are schools in our east side Monroe County that have always held their graduation well before regents exams take place, one of them being West Arone Quay. So, we'll find a way to make it work. So...
All right. I was just curious, because, okay.
Yep.
The state was discussing switching from men requiring a certain number of days to a certain number of hours.
Yeah.
I don't recall if that's in place, and if that's in place for this calendar or not.
That's not in place yet, but the clarification we did get through the Superintendent's Group from the Commissioner directly is that, and I read it this way too, which is it would no longer be days, it would just be hours, but it's actually the days doesn't go away. So, the proposal is it's still 180 school days. The hours helps us out because of half days, and having a half day, like right now, under the mandate, we can't fit two half days into one week. And if you have a, if you have like a week of school where Monday's off for a federal holiday, you can't have another day off or a half day because you won't meet the hours. And so, with the, if that goes through, then it's still 180 days, but it provides us some flexibility if we utilized half days. So, I looked to Mark, and I know we looked at that. It doesn't really help Penfield, but there are some districts that it does help more. But many of us, when we read it, read it as, the way it was worded was that it would no longer be about days, it would be about hours. I think we all got a little excited because we're like, we could have like 20 snow days and still meet the hours. But, but we learned from the Commissioner that it's not what it means. The 180 days still stands. The hours comes into play for half days and things like that. The best example I can tell you is last school year, we used up our snow days, and we had to take days at the end of the year, a very unhappy, nobody's happy with that, including me. It really impacted the elementary school, and what they were asking for was, well, hey, could we do like three half days instead of two whole days and a half day? And because we don't, we didn't have that ability because it wasn't about hours, we couldn't do that. We had to have full days. Now, with the hours, if that goes through and we run into that situation, we might be able to have two half days in a week. But Penfield doesn't typically utilize half days. We have tried in the past. We don't typically get what we want out of it because you still have to serve lunch, it's a long day, transportation's tough, and I'd rather have a full Superintendent's Conference Day when we can, so we have staff really ready and focused all day as opposed to teaching half day and then trying to go into professional development.
Yeah, thank you.
No, no problem.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you.
I will turn it over now to Mark for the budget.
Thank you. Tonight, we're going to be talking, we'll be having the second presentation on the instructional portion of the budget. So, at the, earlier tonight, you've heard lots of reference, I think, to our goals. You heard it from Ann Punsey in the Art Department. You've heard Dr. Putnam mention partnerships. At our last meeting, we talked about the capital budget, and tonight you'll see some of our capital project planning certainly has to do with fiscal responsibility. So, those three threads of academic achievement and excellence, partnerships, and fiscal responsibility weave their way through the entire budget. Tonight, really though, tonight's presentation on the second portion, the general instruction portion of the, of our budget, really has the most to do with academic achievement. We started our budget back in October. We've worked our way through this process. In green mean, as you know, it means it's been done. So, we're well on our way. Tonight, we're going to take a look at the portion of the budget that includes regular school, occupational education, libraries, computer services, clubs, and sports. So, it's the, this is really the heart of the instructional program, and it's the largest portion of our budget. Just the largest portion of the budget, the way we split it up, the way we split it up for presentation purposes. Tonight's presentation, fully a third of the budget, 2.6 percent. It is increasing by 2.6 percent. That's $771,000 in total. It's a $30 million budget. And you'll see in a moment, as I start to unpack what that $30 million includes, it's mostly staffing. That shouldn't be a surprise to us, right? We are a school, which is a people business. And while we spend in previous meetings talking about buildings and grounds and capital projects and equipment and so on, it's really people that drive the cost of the budget. And tonight, in this budget, I just wanted to call out and begin by talking about what are the significant staffing changes from year to year. You have a full analysis in your packet of all of the FTEs that are included in this budget, what was planned, what is actual, and what we're planning as we go forward. But I wanted to call out the more significant ones. There are some small, you know, two tenths of kind of an FTE changes. But really, what's driving the year-over-year change here is we'll be including a budget, we will budget again for four sections of kindergarten per building. As you recall, last year, we ended up with just three sections at Harris Hill. For planning purposes and for budgeting purposes, we're going to include four. We'll monitor that, we'll adjust that as we move forward, because it is entirely possible that we end up with, you know, three sections and five. We don't know yet. We've had kindergarten registration. I will tell you that it's running higher than it has in the past. So, you know, we know the world is changing. So, in terms of our elementary school enrollments, they're ramping up. So, we'll budget four sections of K. The budget also includes three FTE unallocated. So, that's three bodies, three FTE that we include in the budget for changes that occur unbeknownst to us or unplanned by us. It could be the necessity for an additional teacher at the high school or middle school because of program demands. It could be driven by the addition of a, of a, an additional section of elementary school. It's, that's the just-in-case portion of the budget. And our commitment to the public and to the board is that we don't use those unless we have to, but we do include that capacity in case because it makes it possible for us to plan and move forward with change. Because of the, this year's class sizes, we are planning for an additional, and have budgeted for, an additional section of second grade at Cobles. So, that will reduce that class size. There's a plan in place for movement of classes that'll allow for the creation of a space. Right now, there's no space for it. But with a little bit of planning and this budget, we should be able to accommodate that. And finally, not a large dollar amount, but a change nonetheless, is in the athletics budget, there's the inclusion of modified, the middle school level golf and unified basketball. So, modified unified basketball, if you will. So, the extension of, which, there has to be a better name, but the extension of that program that's been successful at the high school now down to the middle school. So, that's, those are the changes. But this is what that budget looks like, that $30.1 million budget. When we start to split it up, these are the bars for the components, the functional areas of the budget. So, I mentioned earlier that this covers regular instruction, occupational education, the libraries, and so on. Those are those little tiny bars. The regular instruction, so the general instruction, the core of our program consumes fully 25 million of the $30 million budget. And for as much focus as we give to interscholastic athletics, you can see off furthest to the right that it's truly a relatively minor portion of the budget. You can unpack it a different way, rather than by functional area, by object of expenditure, by what you spend your money on. And when you unpack it that way, again, this shouldn't surprise anyone, of the $30 million, about $25 million is salaries. Salaries for certified staff, that's instructional staff. Not, you can see here also the pieces for non-certified staff equipment, textbooks, and so on. This is a people business. This budget, this $30 million budget is about people, and really, it's about teachers. And of those teachers, most in general, most in general education. So, to back up here, of that $30 million, you'll see about $25 million of it is certified salaries. Of those $25 million worth of certified salaries, the majority of them are in general education. So, that's the, and we've, and we've reviewed, you have lots of detail in your packet on individual program areas, staffing and individual programs, changes, and so on. We've tried to detail wherever there were differences. But I just wanted to point out where we're at with regard to our budget progress to date. With this, then, at the next board meeting, we will be addressing the BOCs programs. We're just finalizing that program review now, and our estimate for those programs is due to BOCs so that they can begin their budget process by the end of this week. Then, we finish up with benefits, really, and an analysis of the entire budget. So, next steps for us to do are to continue to analyze that BOCs budget. We'll have that finalized and done by the end of this week. And we're also looking, we continue to look at program staffing, enrollment. We're looking at elementary enrollments now. We're really beginning now, after the first kindergarten registration, to start to take a look at projecting next year's elementaries. Sometimes, it will be required for us to make a change. Not usually, but sometimes we'll go back and make some tweaks. And I've begun to gather and to have additional conversation with the assessors because the next thing that's going to happen then is when we move into revenue, will be estimation of tax rates. I'll talk about the tax cap in a moment. So, the things that I think the board should be reminded of, and a piece of news around that, are that, you know, this is a year of reassessment in Brighton. So, you know, the Brighton, Brighton's going through reassessment right now, so their equalization rate will go back to 100 percent from, from the 80-some-odd thing that it had fallen to. And I also just learned that the equalization rates in Penfield are falling from 100 to 95. So, they'll be scheduling, they have scheduled a reassessment for the following year. So, that's going to make for lots of moving parts in this year's estimate of tax rates as we move forward. So, because all those changes, along with the other changes, are, make for a pretty complicated year. So, that assessment information, this equalization information's going to be important as we communicate our budget as we move forward. So, March 13th, BOCs. March 27th, a full budget review, that's our first night. So, we'll have benefits and our first look at the entire budget, along with an estimate of revenue and taxes. And we need to approve and adopt, the deadline is the 20th. So, we may not go any later than the 20th, and the way the calendar fell for us this year, we'll be approving and adopting the budget at the meeting on April 17th. May 1st is our last, is the public budget hearing, the three-part presentation, and then finally, the vote on May 15th. Also, this year, of course, we'll talk about it in just a second, but also on the ballot, well, there'll be four things on the ballot. So, there will be election of board members, there will be the general fund budget, there'll be school buses, and there will be our capital project. All that happening on the night of May 15th. Is there any questions? You have lots of, this one has lots and lots of sort of dense data, but are there any questions about program two before I talk about, I want to talk a little bit about the tax cap and a little bit about the capital project.
Okay. Board members? Carol?
Yes?
Thank you, Marjorie. Can you tell us a little bit about the new FTE unallocated?
Sure.
Because they think on every...
Yes, we always, yeah, we've always included those three.
I'm in the wrong here.
We always include those three. I wonder what that is. No, we always include those three unallocated, and those are used, in some years, we've used more than others, but they're used for, as a buffer around misses in planning. So, you know, as we, as the high school schedules put together, we're scheduling, we're rolling forward. This year's, if you look at this year's FTEs, they roll forward pretty much lockstep against next year. When we, when we know what the change is, if we are planning a change, then we'll budget for it. But there's lots of changes that will happen as students vote with their feet, as people move in and out of the district, and very often, there's a requirement for another section, a different program. And it's that, those unallocated FTEs that allow that to happen.
Okay. So, we have used the three from this year?
I think this year, we ended up not using them. So, yeah, no, this year, we may have used a tenth or two. It's in your packet, but if you look from planned to less, I think we ended up actually not using the three, maybe a couple of tenths.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I have another question. Thank you for answering my questions that I submitted earlier. I still don't have an answer, though, regarding the, what was it? There was an increase in the amount for any academic competitions or anything like that?
Oh, didn't I say, oh, you were going to answer that. I thought we answered that.
But the answer that I did not get, so, the change, there's not going to be any change in how much the kids are fundraising and asking parents for, you know, funds for that?
So, there'll probably still be fundraising. You know, we hope that that increase may offset a bit, but we have a number of new, I think, as Jim talked about, we have a number of new clubs, and our students are doing really well. And so, they're moving on to, you know, sort of, I mentioned like the math group who moves on to the state competition next. So, I do believe there'll still be some fundraising for the clubs that are allowed to fundraise for some, for some of that. Model UN is one where they do, you know, they do pay some out of pocket, and then we try to, try to make that as fair as we can. But this, well, at least alleviate a little bit, I think. But I want to be fair and honest to say that it won't remove the fundraising in its entirety.
Okay, great. Well, it's nice to know that we can alleviate a little bit. Thank you.
And it's, and it's kudos, you know, it's one of those pieces where you've got to add more, but our kids are competing at, at higher level, so they're moving on beyond the local, you know, so it's, that is nice.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments?
All right. Tax cap update real quick because this is, for the most part, a repeat of what you've already seen before. Our tentative, I was required to submit by March 1st, our first calculation of tax cap to the state comptroller, so we've done so, at 2.78 percent. That's not different than what I've presented to you before, but because we've taken that first and big formal step, I just wanted to remind the board of that, let you know, this is the simplified tax cap calculation. And in your agenda tonight is an adoption of, of that tax cap. So, just wanted to review that quickly with the board so that you'd know where we're at. In terms of, of history and where that fits in with our history, you know, we've, we have averaged over the last 10 years about 2 percent. So, that's a little bit higher in terms of cap than we've seen over the past 10 years. Inflation, for the first time, is at 2 percent. It hasn't been there for quite some time. So, you know, we've always worked to balance the needs of the school and of our students with the concerns of taxpayers. We're going to continue to do that. Elementary project update. I just want to remind everyone, we, I mentioned earlier that this is going to be on the ballot with, in May with our budget. And tonight, in your agenda, you have just one more piece of SIKR work to allow this to go forward. It seems like we should, it should just be a regular spot on the agenda at this point.
No, it doesn't end.
But the, I just wanted to remind folks what the scope of that project is, because it has changed as we've moved through this process. And in fact, that's what tonight's SIKR resolution recognizes. So, four classrooms each, along with the necessary expansion. So, four classrooms each at Scribner, Cobles, and Indian Landing, including at Scribner, gym and cafeteria expansions and parking improvements. At Cobles, really just renovation to the cafeteria serving line. That cafeteria is trapped within the building, so there's no real, you know, easy way... That cafeteria is trapped within the building, so there's no real, you know, easy way to expand it. And lots of site work around parking and traffic and parent drop-off improvements. Indian Landing, in addition to lots of site work for bus loop and parent drop-off improvements, a separate parent drop-off area in the back, also a cafeteria expansion. So really, the focus of this project is, you know, that those elementary additions and allowing for the increase in growth at the elementary school. There's also going to be some work done at Bay Trail and the high school, work out of the building condition survey that really falls into the nature of, you know, sort of the kinds of things you have to do when you are a homeowner to keep your plant in good shape. So things like masonry repair and exhaust system replacements, HVAC replacements, and so on, including here at the high school, a replacement of the chiller plant or the air conditioning plant, which is currently out of service. So that's included as a, as a part of this project as well. We've revised the budget. At the next meeting, I'll have a more complete budget presentation. But our total budget for this will be about $22.622,588,000. That's about $17 million in direct capital costs, and then construction contingency, incidental costs, and fees. So we're looking at about the $22.5 million range. We're going to, we're also planning a community information night. That's scheduled for April 23rd here at the Commons, where we'll go through the plans in great detail. We haven't finalized how we're going to do the presentations, but I'm envisioning very similar to what we've done in the past with some of our consultants presenting parts, going through, hearing from the public, answering any questions. And again, that will be here at the high school, at the Commons, on the 23rd of April. And finally, let's not forget, May 15th. We're all going to be here, hopefully, for the vote. So from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the high school gym. All of this information, the budget information in greater detail, past presentations, it's all online on our website and is all available for folks who have additional questions.
Okay. Board members, any questions, comments? No? John?
There's a timeline where we have to adopt that budget for the addition, elementary additions.
Correct, 45 days.
Oh, 45, all right.
45 days before the vote, same as, same as our budget.
Okay.
So we're actually working on that resolution now, so it'll go to the attorney for review. Our bond council's working on that resolution. I think it's the next meeting.
Okay.
So in fact, I'm sure it is the next meeting you'll be adopting the resolution establishing the vote.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Mark.
Let me talk about the change now.
Sure, go ahead.
So I, I'm going to flip back to something. I apologize for we wrap up superintendent's reports. I apologize, just give me one minute. And I just wanted to thank Barb Babiaras for her question, because her question about when graduation landed, as I answered it, I realized it didn't sound right. So I'd like to apologize to the board and to the public who may have been watching at home that I was texting under the table, which I try not to do at these board meetings because I am here. But I was actually texting with Dr. Maloney, who immediately got in contact with RIT and verified that the date is actually June 27th. So when you go to vote for this, it is, the language is that you're voting on the proposed calendar, and it's actually, we'll change that, it's June 27th. And the reason for that is, it's always been the third week of June, and so we put it in there, but the reality is, RIT looks at it as the second week of testing. So will our graduation moving in, you know, for the next, I don't remember how long the contract is, and we have right of first refusal, so we can always review it, is that it's the second week, the Thursday of the second week of New York State testing. So Barb, if you hadn't had asked that, I wouldn't have, they wouldn't have triggered it. And we would have had to come back next board meeting to reapprove or to change. So, so thank you very much, and as we, when we get to that spot, it is. It actually, so that question around, actually, all of our tests will be done, it'll be great, and we can, and we can make it work.
Okay.
So, I guess, so.
Yes.
You've got an extra week to make sure that you secure a pair of red shoes for graduation.
Yes, that's right.
So, thank you.
Next year.
Next year, yes.
I'm on second.
It's next year.
All right.
Thank you. And that concludes superintendent reports.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, we're on page four of our agenda. Our board business, starting with facilities and the various change orders. They're all there in your packet. The above change orders have been reviewed by and are supported by architect Vic Tomacelli, project manager Gary Huffman, clerk of the works Alan McNiff, and deputy superintendent for business and finance Mark Sansucci. May I have a motion and a second that the change orders as described above be approved? So, any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. All right, our SEACR resolution. The complete SEACR resolution for the 2018 elementary additions project is printed on the agenda. The board has previously adopted two SEACR resolutions for this project. Since the time of these resolutions, the board has determined that construction of a new bus garage operation center and buildings and grounds facility on Plank Road, and the improvements and renovations at the existing five-mile-long road site are no longer feasible and should be removed from the project. As part of its review of the revised project, the board has asked SEI Design Group to review whether the modifications result in any significant environmental impacts that are new, different, or greater than those previously discussed. SEI has reviewed the revised project and has found that the environmental impacts of the revised project will be less than or equal to those identified during the SEACR review process. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the board having reviewed the letter prepared by SEI Design Group and two, having found that the environmental impacts of the revised project will be less than or equal to the previously reviewed environmental impacts, hereby determines that it is not necessary to reopen the SEACR process and that the November 28th negative declaration and the December 12th Type 2 resolution remain in effect for the revised project. The district staff is authorized to take all steps necessary to implement this resolution. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. All right. On page seven now. Adoption of the tax levy limit. Chapter 97 of the laws of 2011 enacted by the state legislature and the governor established a property tax cap on the amount that a school district's property tax levy can increase each year. This law requires that school districts submit to the state comptroller, the commissioner of education, and the commissioner of taxation and finance any information necessary for calculating their tax levy limit for the coming school year no later than March 1st. The comptroller has developed a web tool that will allow districts to satisfy this reporting requirement via a single online submission. Based on the information and guidance available at this time, the 2018-19 levy limit for Penfield has been calculated as set forth below. Resolved that the Board of Education of the Penfield Central School District hereby approves the submission of the tax levy limit of $63,404,186 as calculated in accordance with guidance set forth by the state comptroller, the commissioner of education, and the commissioner of taxation and finance. The tax levy limit represents an increase of 2.78%. And be it further resolved, the tax levy limit plus all exclusions as set forth in the law is hereby established at $63,404,186. This maximum levy increase after exclusions represents an allowable increase of 2.78%. May I have a motion and a second? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Contract with Sylvan Learning Center. The district is contracting with Sylvan Learning Center to provide supplemental educational services on behalf of Our Lady of Mercy. The contract is not to exceed $50,000 and will be paid through Title I funding. Students will receive Sylvan services at Our Lady of Mercy and at the Sylvan retail locations. The program includes diagnostic assessments, guided instruction, and progress updates that will be available to parents, teachers, and the OLM administration. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent of schools to enter into a contract with Sylvan Learning Center on behalf of Our Lady of Mercy? So moved. Any questions or comments? Lisa?
I know I tried to ask this, and I just don't understand, I don't understand this.
I'm happy to.
Please.
It's a great question.
So as, one of our jobs as a public school district is to manage the title grant funds for the non-public schools within our boundaries. It's not a job that I think we love. I think in the old days, Mark, and correct me, they used to just be able to get the money and do what they wanted with it, and there really wasn't any oversight. But because the government really doesn't oversee the non-public schools, they are relying on us as a local agency to do that, and so.
Can I stop you right there?
Yeah.
This is where I get lost. So how, how do they know how many Title I funds they get?
That's all part of the process. So they look at, they look at all of the students, we're talking about Mercy.
The state.
Well, yeah, the state looks at all of the students who are attending Mercy and the districts that they come from, and whether or not those schools within those districts that those kids are coming from areas that are designated as Title I. And if they are, those students, even though they're not in a public school, are still entitled to the use of those funds to help ensure their academic success.
All right, that's, that's where I got lost.
Okay? So where we're at with these, with what, and then.
So then they send the money to you, to Penfield?
To us. Yes, the other districts do, right? So we're not even talking about Title I monies that are Penfield's Title I monies. These are students, because PHS is not a Title I designated school, any students, any Penfield residents who are attending Mercy are not eligible for services under these funds. We're talking about students who attend Mercy but are from other districts that do have Title I funds and are eligible for these services. So what happens is, we have this contract, Mercy, Sylvan provides the services, Mercy verifies that the services were provided, we get billed because we're the district of where Mercy is, and then Bill Maloney and Mark Sansucci bill out the district of residence for those students, and they pay us. So it's just a lot of moving around of funds, but it really isn't anything that's happening for Penfield students. But we have to manage those title grant funds for the non-pub because they're in our district boundaries. All of our public schools have to do that. Whenever you have non-pubs within your boundaries, that's just part of the game.
Okay.
That helps me, thank you.
No problem. I tried to keep the answer short and sweet, but I figured there was going to be follow-ups.
I don't get it.
No, that's good, it's good clarification.
It is.
Okay, we have the motion, right?
Yes.
Okay. And a second. All right, any questions or comments other than Lisa's? Okay, all those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Walgreens tax refund. Wellpen LLC, Cara Walgreens, Walgreen Eastern Company, Inc., formally challenged the tax assessment for real property located at 1659 Penfield Road for tax year 2017-18. The town of Penfield has agreed to certain reductions in assessments. Justice Ark of the New York State Supreme Court, Monroe County, issued a decision adjudicating these challenges and reduced the assessments as followed, as you can see in your packet, for a refund of $8,818.41. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approve the payment as described above?
So moved.
Any questions or comments?
I just had a follow-up question, Mark. Is that the total refund or just our share? I can't remember.
That's total refund.
Total, okay. So ours might be 60% of that, or?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, no, that is, that's the total Penfield's, that's our.
That's what we pay.
Yes, exactly.
So overall, it was like $14,000 or something like that.
Because the town would get a refund as well.
They seem to be coming back every year, so this is probably going to be every other year.
Is this the one at Panorama?
Yes.
Because I, I think the other one is going to be a Walgreens now, too. I just heard the one at.
250 and 441.
Yeah, I got a letter.
We'll probably get one from them.
In the Plaza?
No, the one, no.
The Rite Aid, the Rite Aid up at 250.
Oh, okay, wow.
That's what I heard, but I, there's my rumor, did you hear it?
I heard it from the pharmacist. So I just know that my wife tried to fill a prescription for one of our kids who wasn't feeling well, and they said, as of like in 24 hours, we're changing systems because we're becoming a Walgreens, so you got to either pick it up now or you got to redo your paperwork. So I, that's the only reason I know, so it's still, I guess, a rumor, but I haven't seen the Walgreens sign, but.
We got a letter. Yeah, we got a letter.
There was a letter.
There did. So it's going to be a Walgreens.
So I do believe it's official.
And there'll be a Walgreens down in Panorama Plaza.
Official rumor.
Yeah.
Both town of Penfield.
I know.
And the pharmacist down in Panorama Plaza, his two kids go to Cobles.
There you see. See, we're all connected. It's a small world. And how about, how about we move on?
Did we vote?
No, we did not vote. Okay, so we did questions and comments, and we did a motion and a second. You guys are really messing me up today. Okay.
We're doing this today.
I know. All those, right, all those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Donations and book fair proceeds. Donations and book fair proceeds totaling $9,806.92 for items in the 2017-18 budget was received by the district schools as shown. And I'd just like to give the shout-out. Harris Hill Elementary Book Fair Proceeds, $2,109.94. Scribner Elementary Book Fair Proceeds, $2,086.62. Bay Trail Middle School Book Fair Proceeds, $1,320.53. Indian Landing Elementary Book Fair Proceeds, $1,751.83. And high school class of 2017, buddy benches, $2,538. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approve an amendment totaling $9,806.92 to the 2017-18 budget as shown above. The amount submitted both is revenue and expenditure items, and express its gratitude to the donors for the generous support of Penfield schools and all Penfield parents, students, and staff for their support of this year's book fairs.
So moved.
Any questions or comments? Barb?
And buddy benches are?
Buddy benches? I was ready for this one. So buddy benches are.
See, his mic was on.
I was ready. And I can, I'll give you the answer, and I'll tell you that you've seen two somewhere else. So buddy benches are benches that are made, that are decorated, that are an opportunity, really, they're going to be outside at Penfield High School in certain areas for kids to sit on. They're nice benches. You've seen them, we see them mostly at our elementary school, so I don't know if these are being dedicated to elementary schools, but if you walk into Cobles, right out front, there are these beautiful painted benches, and you'll see them at some of the other elementary schools. They call them buddy benches, they put them out near the playgrounds, and if you don't have a friend to play with and you need a buddy, you sit on the bench, and then the kids know their buddy benches, and hey, this kid needs a friend, and I'll go and sit on the buddy bench with them. I get shivers saying it because it's a really neat little idea, and it's, again, about the kindness and caring. So that was the class of 2017 donated, you know, so they have extra funds after they graduate, and they donated for buddy benches. Yep.
All right, any other questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. All right, so may I have a motion and a, okay, regarding the school calendar for 2018 and 19. May I have a motion and a second that the 2018-2019 school calendar be approved as amended?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Let's see, no remarks, I don't believe, unless anyone has anything to bring up.
Did we have a SEACR resolution today? Oh, we did, where was I?
I don't know, you were thinking, I don't know. Things are a little askew. No one finished business, any, yes, John?
I guess it's on a new business. On behalf of Monroe County School Board Association, I represent the school board members on the Monroe County Education Coalition, I've informed you about that, which has NISA, school boards, PTA, superintendents are represented, there are assistant superintendents for business, Ratchets City School District teachers, and Monroe County Schools Teacher Union presidents. So this is in regard to the discussion of teachers with guns. So we've agreed that we're going to sit down and do a position paper, unified.
Nice.
And you can guess where it's going, but I mean, very unified, because everybody's been getting these questions, none of which, except NISA at the Albany level, had a formal position because they put it together in a week. So we're going to put that together and have that. So we're going to put that together and have that as a position that'll go out, hopefully, in the next two months or so, that will provide some clarity for the press as a unified group.
Yeah.
Of where, where everybody stands. So I just wanted to update.
Can I just, for clarity, to make sure it's said, is, do you know what the stance will be?
I can't, I mean, it's, I think you've seen representatives of this group.
But you're not, I mean, you can't say yet because it's the group that's got a.
I can't, but it's 99% sure it will be opposing any type of weapons for teachers or anything of that nature, because in our email conversations and at the session last night at West Aronacoit, several in our group, including the PTA, got up and expressed that. So again, it's to clarify it that informally, right now, we've agreed, this is not a good idea, and I think that's in tune with what our parents are thinking and our teachers.
Absolutely.
But we have to go out there and put it out there, because we're all getting calls from the press, and we want a unified approach, because we're all, we're all in this together. So that's one of the good things about the MCEC, that we can do that, so.
I'm glad you're taking that up, and that, the goal is to have that unified, you know, position, and, and then to share it and to stay unified and consistent with that, so I think.
Yeah, and as I've reported before, we don't always agree on everything.
Right.
Because we're quite a diverse group, but this will be 100% agreement.
Very good. Thank you, John. Mark, did you have a comment?
Just again, a new business will be going to Albany for advocacy trip.
Yes. You and John and Dr. Putnam, anybody else?
Next Monday.
Yeah.
Yep. I will be there for the New York State Superintendent Conference and Advocacy Day, and so I did let Catherine know, I'll let you know, is that, that I'll have to leave Tuesday a little early to get back for a meeting, but, but I'll be there, and you guys go up Monday to Tuesday, I'll be there Sunday to Tuesday, so I'll definitely come over, and we'll, we'll do some advocacy for the state.
Have you seen the list of our advocates?
Yes, yep.
Yeah, our best, our best are going for, you know, our best advocates are going, so I'm really glad that all three of you can make it there.
I think, I think all of us here are good advocates.
Well, thank you, yes, I know, but.
But those who are willing to sit on a bus for.
I think that's really where I'm going with this, yeah. All right, there being no other new business. May I have a motion and a second that the meeting be adjourned, adjourned at 8:36 p.m.
So moved.
Any questions or comments?
Second.
Oh, I didn't, I thought, I thought, see, all right, let's just be done, okay? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you.